All up there, so I would invite you to stand and join me in invocation followed by the pledge by Commissioner Browning. Father, we thank you today for your goodness, your mercy, and most of all, for your love for us. Father, we pray your blessings on our community. Father, we pray your blessings on our meeting today. We ask for wisdom, we ask for guidance, and we ask for discernment as we consider, discuss, and act upon things that affect the residents of our community. And Lord, may our actions always result in serving the greater good and in bringing honor and glory to you. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. While I know Father Tom and Jeremy and Susan are about to jump out of their seat with excitement to learn about the proposed amendment to the wrecker ordinance, I am going to, out of an act of benevolence here, allow you to go first. And you are certainly more than welcome to stay for the rest of the festivities, but we will recognize you at this time for your presentation.
Thank you very much. I don't give people permission to leave before the sermon, but you're very gracious to let us stay out.
I gotta change churches.
To share with you the results of some master planning that we've done at Christ Church, which involves the county. We have our master planner here with us today helping with the presentation because he's able to pronounce in bulk and can answer a lot of technical questions. But really, as many of you know, Christ Church has been on the island a very long time. It's a congregation that thrives and has been growing recently. It has continued to struggle with some safety issues with Frederica Road, most of our parking being on the county right of way, having all of our parishioners and visitors and guests, as well as tourists who park across the street and have to cross. The commission was wonderful to allow us to put in a crossing device about eighteen months ago, which has helped, but it has solved all of our problems. When we started the master planning process, we made this one of our chief concerns for a master plan for our campus is how to get safe and adequate parking. They take some of that Frederica Road issue out of play if possible. And one of the recommendations came back to try shifting Frederica Road further away from the church to do that, and essentially eliminate the impact that Frederica Road has on the safety of people around Christ Church. And so really, that's the thing we want to share with you all today. Again, we've had a chance to talk to some of you and get initial feedback, but to answer some more questions or to see what other concerns we have. Our ultimate goal here with this part of the plan, regardless of things that involve buildings in our future and other things on the campus, is to get all the parking and all of the tourists off of Frederica Road in terms of parking and to eliminate the need for them all to be crossing Frederica Road as traffic increases on the north end. So with that, I'm gonna let Jeremy run through the brief overview. He's given you all a packet there that he'll walk us through, and we're happy to answer any questions or address the initial concerns. So Jeremy?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Jeremy Markleus. I am a planner at the lovely city of St. Augustine. Please come down and visit the city. But we are really enjoying being up here in Georgia and just the hospitality and kindness that we've been greeted with is certainly wonderful. And what an amazing campus that Christ Church has. Certainly, we gave a lot of the store properties down in St. Augustine. That was one of the key reasons why the church actually retained our firm. And so without any further ado, I'll go on and dive into this. The packets that you have roughly mirror the presentation, but certainly go a little bit more detail. When we first started out this master planning effort with the church, we went through a whole number of questions with their best tree, with the parish overall, and we said, all right, what are these needs that are in front of you? Right now, we have both short-term and long-term needs, but I kept coming back to parking and circulation on that campus is a huge part, but they also want to balance that with their stewardliness to the place that, you know, it is one of the first items that was on St. Simon's Island long before Glen County even as an organization or municipality existed, because it has that amount of history to it, of course, and multiple Wesley's and and their impact on the congregation. But when we posed this to the best tree, well, with the township, came back to parking, safe parking, and better signs, which is still talking about wait line. It's basically understanding how people are parking that are not only attending the church, but you also have a number of ports that are coming to see Christ Church Frederica in addition to Fort Frederica immediately to the north. So we look at the surrounding properties, and we've been working with Fort Frederica and were appreciative to have had a number of meetings, I think, and good dialogue until this point about opportunities to not only address some of the church's needs in terms of parking and circulation, but also to address some of the other circulation needs. And with the amount of rain that we have received recently and Fort Frederica having to close their entrance, when was that, about two weeks ago, if I remember correctly, it really is starting to show that there's also some stormwater issues that we think that we could potentially fix in the process of really solving the parking issue that Christ Church has. So as you can see, Christ Church actually owns the land on both sides of Frederica Road, and shifting Frederica Road is essentially due to land blocks with Glen County. So there wouldn't be an acquisition cost to the right of way. It would simply be shifting it to the east and taking up that room for having parking that would be in front of not only the existing church, but also some of the expansion that they're planning on doing with their parish hall. Do you mind going to the next slide? This is the overall master plan. And right now, Frederica Road roughly goes through this portion with Old Monument, which is essentially only serving Christ Church Frederica as well as the maintenance area for National Parks Service. In this scenario, we're looking to shift that eastward. We are staying out of the saltwater marsh. We do make a slight impact on the freshwater marsh, but we're working closely with Susan Shidman, who we should have recognized earlier. She's a senior warden at Christ Church, and her background certainly, and DNR has been helping through this process. There's, the idea is to put all of the parking now on the west side of Frederica Road, so we eliminate the need to cross Frederica Road when you are attending a service at Christ Church or if you're simply visiting Christ Church itself. Do you mind going to the next slide? So you can see in the current verses that were proposed, and there were blowups in the packet, the idea of shifting Frederica Road eastward, and you can see this is the current alignment verses that were proposed, it allows us to get enough land by just swapping with the county if you all would be interested and would permit us to move forward. So it would go from currently 100-foot right of way for Frederica Road, which is roughly 3.3 acres. I should note that the edge of the road is about 20 feet off of that historic brick wall that you all may be familiar with that goes in front of Christ Church. And then there is a 60-foot, give or take, right of way for Old Monument, which is about half an acre, which, as I mentioned, is primarily for access to National Parks Service's maintenance area as well as to Christ Church's cemetery, et cetera. So roughly, there's 3.8 acres in Glen County right of way right now. The proposed alignment is still 100-foot right of way. Now we are shifting the road completely away from this historic campus, and it results in about three and a half acres of right of way from Frederica Road. So it's roughly, it's actually a little bit more than the current right of way. And it's from Stevens Road intersection all the way out actually to the entrance to Fort Frederica. There's a number of odd terms that Frederica Road takes as it goes through there, as access not only Fort Frederica, but West Carolina Parish. We have two other churches to the north. You have a Tyree, you have a number of homes that are further to the north. And so this is not only an impact improvement for Christ Church and hopefully for Frederica, but for a number of others as well. And there's actually going to be a meeting Thursday evening where the neighborhood, et cetera, will be invited, and this will be further unveiled. And the proposed request would be to actually abandon Old Monument Road, because the access to the National Parks Service, we've already had conversations with the park, and that there would be an easement that would be provided for access. And I think that it's probably safe to say that there's a general agreement that we can work through all those particulars. And so you can see that the net total would go from 3.8 to 3.5 acres actually in the right of way. One of the chief items that we were told when we started working here is that St. Simon's certainly so, it's very crowded of this oak canopy and streets. And so one of the things that we did when we were looking at this overall alignment, we wanted to avoid the oak canopy as much as we could, and so we essentially aimed for the pine trees. And so this alignment of Frederica Road does impact some pine trees, but we wanted to make sure that in total that there was no net loss of canopy. We've had preliminary conversations with Golden Isles Tree Foundation, and I think that they're sure that we're going in the right direction in terms of how we're thinking about this. And the other items that we're going to be looking at are the archaeological as well as the environmental portions of the impact. We are retaining ESI, they have Savannah and Jacksonville office, we'll be working with for those two elements. I'll go to that next slide. So generally, our anticipated schedule is that we would be moving into 30% engineering and environmental here in the fall. In addition to our firm and ESI, we also have Rockford's Engineering that will be providing the civil engineering portion of this. The grant application, which is one of the primary drivers of the schedule, we've had numerous conversations with federal DOT about grant opportunities that are out there. And there is a program called the Federal Land Access Program, or FLAT for short, and it is all about improving connections between different federal land management units and communities that are surrounded. And certainly with Fort Frederica immediately to the north, we think that this would be a potential vehicle for some funding. And from what we're understanding is that somewhere in between September and November that this window's going to reopen for this grant application. And so we're anticipating that somewhere in the fall or the winter of 2017, this would be opening up. We would like to go after that grant program, but it should be clear that the person who owns the road, which is Glen County, would be the applicant in this scenario. And then we'd need a sponsoring federal land management, which would be Fort Frederica National Monument. We hope that by summer, if it falls the same track that has this year, we'll have a war notification. So we're talking somewhere in the fall, start construction with about 120 days anticipated. So one of the items that we were told is to be very clear as to what the ask is, and so we came up with really three areas that we hope that Glen County would be interested in discussing further. And the first is that we would need general agreement about shifting Frederica Road and banning Old Monument, that Glen County would be as the applicant. We need to make sure that there's a general consensus that we're moving in the right direction. And the third item is that there's a local match piece that is involved with these federal grants. It is an 80/20 minimum, meaning that there'd be a 20% local match, and the church is already having a number of conversations with other funding partners, because the church is anticipating being part of this local match. What's interesting is that if you can get up to a 41% local match, you get more points. And so it makes the ability to get the balance of the 59% of funding from the federal government actually go up. So we're going through all of the, starting with 30% in the next, probably 30 days here, and so the idea is that we would come back to the commission when we have the 30% engineering, because then we'll know much better in terms of costs and things like that. So here again, Father Tom, Susan Shidman, the rest of the best tree, and us candidly felt like this was an appropriate time to really open this up to the public and just to get an idea if the commission is interested in pursuing this program. So anything else that I should add or go ahead with questions?
You had indicated originally, I think in our meeting, that somewhere around a million bucks is what you're anticipating the cost to be.
And we also have been working with Dave Austin and his team to get an idea of what the local numbers seem to have been, and their number was somewhere around 700, give or take. So we think that it's somewhere between 700,000 and $1 million, which would be to ship Frederica Road and the associated utilities that are in that right of way.
Did my, one concern that I have, how is this going to affect, oh, let me back up. Do you think this is going to get the pedestrian traffic away from the through traffic? As we all know, in the past, we had some issues back there when they put speed bumps in several years ago, and a lot of your homeowners down that had to drive their little sports cars that only cleared the ground, a small area, had a lot of complaints about having to not only go over speed bumps, but to get to a much slower pace. By taking some of these curves out of this, you're certainly going to have a much fairer, if you will, through fare here. Do you anticipate the speed limits that would come along with this? I would imagine we'd maintain the same speed limit down in there, but do, has anybody given any thought to how that might affect the everyday traffic flow in there? As we know, we got some folks over here that like to move pretty quick.
It's a fair question. So I think that there's a number of points. The first is that we were told that the speed bumps did not overload. So that was expressed fairly early on, that traffic calming, we want to do in another manner. Do you mind passing up to the overall master plan? So I think that there are a few things that you could do. A lot of what we've done in places like in downtown St. Augustine, we've actually just changed the pavement so that there's a little more of a rumble strip, so that it kind of jars your attention that you're entering a pedestrian zone. Do you mind going to the next slide? So for instance, where you have a pedestrian connection that would connect to Wesley Memorial Garden and a new prayer garden that we're putting in, we would think that you would want to change the paving in that area so you at least have the rumble strip. I think that the other piece that is important to think about is that if we simplify the traffic pattern, could people go faster? Yes, but I don't think that's necessarily standing their way right now if they're local in terms of the alignment. What I'm more concerned about is the person who's coming through this space because they're a tourist, and they want to see Christ Church Frederica, and they want to see Fort Frederica, and they're on their cell phone because they're following their GPS app, and then Frederica starts switching back and forth. And I think that that's actually more of a safety issue than having a nice continuous curve.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying, disappears, that it's going to take, as we had problems before with the trolleys and the buses and all that, actually stopping on, letting folks get off and walk across, and you still, you've got that traffic doing this, but people just reach out and touch a car. But this disappears, it's going to eliminate that.
Yes, sir. All the buses will come into the off-street parking area, even the bus parking is fully under the church's. Right now, they're parking in the right of way. They've always parked in the right of way before the right of way necessarily existed. But we're really trying to move all that into a truly off-street parking situation. The other piece that I think is notable about the pedestrian piece along here is that we're still planning on having that multi-use path, but we have given it some space between the edge of pavement, so that the pedestrian route that's going along the east side that would access the gardens or could connect into Christ Church, there's some separation there as well. And we're anticipating part of 30% analysis, not only of that particular piece, but of the pedestrian piece as well.
Let me give you a word of advice.
Yes, sir.
I would be careful if you're going to look at changing the pavement up in that area, when the speed humps or speed bumps or whatever was put in. I was the district commissioner for that portion of St. Simon's. And one of the issues was that at night, believe it or not, on Stevens Road and even into the commons, you could hear those cars coming along there. And so just a word to be careful when you, if you're going to be looking at changing any kind of pavement through there, because it may come back to haunt you.
Okay. That's a fair word to worry. We were hoping to get it as far away from the commons as we could, but noise travel get in.
It'll do at night, especially, you know, late at night, one thing or another, so.
That's a very good point.
Questions? Any other questions?
No. I think it's a great idea. Like I said before, good luck to y'all. Anything that promotes safety and doesn't cost account anything, we're all for.
Well, I think it is a huge safety issue, and so, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Beautiful presentation. Thank you. Y'all are welcome to stay.
Contrary to the chairman's belief, I think you would find the tolling ordinance a scintillating conversation.
We'll take our leave today.
Wise move.
Your loss.
Father Tom, we just sat through your sermon.
Yeah.
I'll come back and sit through another one.
The first item on the agenda, as the agenda was written, is to discuss the proposed amendment to the wrecker ordinance. And I'm not sure about who's going to take this one. Commissioner Strickland, do you want to?
No, so this is Commissioner Strickland.
Well, I got him, I got him out here too, so go ahead.
Yeah. Basically, I've been contacted by several of these companies about the tolling fees. We haven't done anything with the rate of these fees in like 15 years, which kind of shocks me when people, when these guys pay 4.61 a gallon for diesel, they were still only getting $100 per car, whatever it is. So, and Alan, I think you did this as well, but I went out and checked with the surrounding counties and got different, everybody's rates differentiate a little bit. Some are like 125, and then a differential for larger vehicles over like a pickup truck and those types of things. So basically, I'm just proposing that we go take that fee, $135, plus the $20 per day from $10 a day for the storage. We're all aware, you know, these guys have to maintain a yard, they have to maintain insurance. $10 a day seems awful light, so. And the only other thing, and Richard, you brought this up, that we were talking about is for dragging them out of the marsh and everything, which I see here, we're kind of letting that up to them to decide, you know, what the charge flag is based on the, on the situation. So, I mean, that's, I mean, that's it in a nutshell, gentlemen. It's not looking to do anything radical here. I just, I just think that after 15 years, we kind of need to revisit this. You know, these guys have a lot of money invested in this, primarily this is an insurance cost, which, you know, it's not a cost of the county, and it's, you know, just something I think we need to look at and update at this time.
How many records do we have on county rotation right now?
Currently got 17, Commissioner.
17?
Yes, sir.
Y'all inspect them periodically as far as to make sure that they're, they have insurance, lots, security, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera?
We do. Every beginning between December 1st of the, the ending year up to January 20th, they are supposed to make application to us, to the police department, and then we, we schedule a time when we inspect them. If they're going to be on our rotation, then we will go out and inspect their yard as well, and then they also have to have some additional equipment on their wrecker if they're going to be on the rotation. There are actually three different types of records that the ordinance allows. The initial wrecker is simply that they have to register with the department, a type one. They register with the department, and then they're authorized to operate in, on the roads of Glen County. Type two means that they come out, they inspect us, they have to have a little bit of additional equipment, and then they will operate on the roads of Glen County. They can be called for request tows and can respond to the scene of accidents at the request of the police department or the request of the owner and tow a vehicle. Type three is actually rotational record, and that's maintained on the list in dispatch to where if someone has no preference on what wrecker they want, the police department needs a vehicle moved out of the roadway, we call for the next rotational record, so.
Am I correct that those rotational units must be state-licensed?
We, I've kind of been through this a lot with the state, since it's primarily my, my position to enforce this from the county side of things. You do not have to have a state MCCD Motor Carrier Compliance Division inspection to operate or be on our rotation. This is something that we've discussed, if I may, it's something we've discussed at length in the past, is we really need to revisit this entire ordinance, not just the rates. They, they should be inspected by the state, because the stuff that we're inspecting, you know, very minimal. We're making sure they have a fire extinguisher and a shovel and things like that. I have no clue whether or not, you know, this vehicle's, you know, mechanically sound from a commercial standpoint, because I'm not trained to do that, but the Motor Carrier Compliance Division is. Now, for example, if you take State Patrol, when they develop their rotation, the post commander actually coordinates with the Motor Carrier Compliance Division. You have to provide that state inspection form to be on their rotation. So technically, we're not even ensuring that they're a sound commercial motor vehicle before we're letting them be on our rotation and tow. So that creates some liability for us, because if they're going down the road and a car comes off and something happens and we call them as a rotation, that could be a problem.
Colin Scoll, he's our officer and lieutenant, shipping the gun, because that's what they do.
Yeah, that's right.
And there's a number of conflicts that we have with existing ordinance. 2005, last time I recall, and it was allowed, for example, under the state law, and he's talking about a non-consensual tolling state law, that we don't require. The law prohibits us from doing any inspection for regulatory compliance with the state law. We can't do it.
Right.
All we can do is to see if they comply with our ordinance, which is what Colin's referring to. So if you apply to be on our local ordinance, we can't even see if you've been inspected by the state. We believe your ordinance should change to include it to be on our ordinance, or I'm sorry, our rotation, as Colin said. You should have gone through a state inspection. That protects us and of course our customers, if you will. It's called non-consensual, and I have a statute for it. In addition to that, our ordinance says that for $20 per day, it starts at midnight. So for example, you've had an evening accident at 9:00 PM, in three hours, you're going to get charged at midnight, $20. The state law says that you get charged $20, I'm sorry, they didn't have a fee. You get a storage fee beginning 24 hours after the time it's towed. So each time a vehicle is towed, you, as a operator, owner, you get one 24-hour solid period from the moment it's towed, not at midnight, as our ordinance reads. So we have a conflict within the state law and our ordinance. It's a simple change.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of language, and it makes it easier for all of us if that ordinance was consistent. And I would like us to go back, take a little pause here, and look at these changes and make these proposals that the commission will look at. In addition to this.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's great, because that was something we had talked about, where there were some other things with the ordinance.
Yes, sir.
We weren't really sure of, because I was, I thought that the state also, don't they have testing for these, for drivers?
Only if it's intrastate. If they tow for one county to another, you're now intrastate, you have to have a DOT inspection.
Okay.
There's another one if you go interstate.
Right.
But if it's only within the county, it's not required.
Okay.
Chief, how about you and your officers getting with the county attorney and let's get the ordinance changed?
Done.
By the way, where is the county attorney?
He's in, uh.
Court.
Oh, that's right, they got a hearing.
Little small case.
While you're looking at it, let me ask you, where did the 25 feet from the edge of the roadway, has it always been that way?
It's always been there my 33 years here.
That seems like an awful short distance from the roadway. We have some pretty wide right of ways out here. And that seems like if we're going to raise the rates, maybe we ought to be a little more demanding, demanding in terms of, you know, 25 feet from the edge of the roadway. Maybe it should be, I would think, within 50 feet.
If you go 50, you would then have, if you go 50 feet, you can charge a fee. Right now, it says over 25 feet. So if you're within 25 feet, you can't charge a thing.
No, they are getting, they are charging. Feet covers the normal right of way for, in most roadways.
Right.
So it's got to be off into the woods or off into the marsh.
No, this is, this is a premium, charge at a premium is what you're saying. Yeah.
I think what they're trying to address, Mike, is that guy goes into the marsh.
When it's over 25 feet away, you can charge.
The woods, you get, you get more money.
Yeah. Well, they're, they're going to charge a fee anyhow, right?
No, this is included.
Huh?
If it's within 25 feet of right of way, you can't. If it's within twenty-five feet of right of way, you can't add additional.
No, 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 what I'm saying is they're gonna, they're, they're gonna get a hundred thirty-five dollars if we change this, when they go out, right? If it's with, up to twenty-five feet.
Right.
What we're talking about on this pair, one, two, three, four down, is they can charge more if it's twenty-six feet. They get a hundred thirty-five, 'cause they charge more. Um, I, I, I don't know, but.
You, you say a limit?
Wrecks, I see right here, they could, they could haul a doggone car from a hundred feet off, if it walked into the marsh or a river, and you got that covered down here, but, uh.
Well, why don't, why don't you specify what I think they're trying to address, Commissioner, was, I think what they're talking about, if it's in the woods or it's someplace, you know, along those lot, where it's not just, you just hook up and pull it in, they've got additional costs, that, I mean, that's kinda what I think that this language was referring to, kinda like when they mentioned the marsh.
Yeah.
That's not a simple question, right, just walk out and no call into it and drag it up, I know what you're saying, but.
Well, 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 the causeway out there, if you go, if you take the causeway, you've got shoulders from the edge of the pavement up to the causeway, probably more than twenty-five feet before you get to the marsh. I would think it's reasonable to expect a wrecker, if, if, let's say it's forty-five feet out to the edge of the marsh, I'd expect a wrecker to be able to get that car. Okay, but once it gets out, you know, getting it up for this higher rate, you know, uh, if, if, if they're in the marsh or if they're in the water, then they can charge a premium. This has got it right here. But, but now they're gonna be able to charge a premium if it's between the twenty-five foot out to the marsh.
Well, yeah, and this isn't something we're changing now. This wasn't, this isn't one of the proposed changes, this was, this is where this ordinance has been for, as you said, for thirty years.
That's why it needs to be changed.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Change it, then come and bring it back for the commission.
I think we need to change that, maybe, uh.
I think if we're gonna look at state patrols, since we work with them.
Look at that distance.
And see if we can get as consistent as we can.
Look at that distance, and I'm not so sure the wording after two, where it says out of order marsh, maybe that should be from water or marsh. Winching, I don't know.
We'll get it, we'll get to you.
Alright, sounds like a plan. Alright, any other comments?
I got one.
No.
Do we, I know one time, didn't we have, didn't the wrecks have to file ICC filing with the state to be on the rotation list?
That's what we're talking about, only if they tow anywhere outside of our county. That's intrastate, they have to have inspection, but if you're only a Glen County wrecker only, you don't go nowhere else, you don't have to do that.
Right, but then, but what the ICC filing does is that, that's, that's in compliance of what the state patrol would require.
That's correct, and they do require, but we don't.
Which, in turn, well, that's also if they cross state lines.
Right, that's the intrastate.
Okay, so when they do that, there is, uh, the minimum, uh, I don't write that many records, but I, I've been familiar with this for a while. The, but the, um, uh, amount of coverage they require is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, that, that, I'm surprised, I only heard you say we had seventeen on there. I've, I've, I've thought there was quite a few more than that.
No, sir, we've got seventeen, we, we've got about, um, four or five tow companies in town currently that have refused to, to register with us, and, um, I've seen them towing numerous times when I've been off duty, um, and I've got so many other duties, I, I don't necessarily have the time to get to them and write them citations. So that's a whole nother issue, but.
We, we still stay with, if you've got a, a multi-wrecker business, you can still, you just still put one on there, or?
Um, yes, that's been another point of contention from the wrecker drivers in the past, owners in the past, is that, um, the way the ordinance reads, um, for instance, if you have eight wrecks, you're going to register those wrecks and pay twenty-five dollars per wrecker, but you only get one wrecker added to the rotation, one spot on the rotation. And so, the wrecker drivers in the past, we've talked to them numerous, I talk to them every year when I register them, they've suggested a flat rate per company of a hundred dollars to register, no matter how many wrecks you have, and then you only get one spot on the rotation. Or, if you have multiple wrecks and you're paying twenty-five dollars per wrecker, that you get a spot on the rotation for every wrecker you pay for to put on rotation. I mean, I've gotten tons of these suggestions from the wrecker drivers in the past, and I, you know, it's.
Do you have any idea about what the average tow bill would be? In other words, what we would put a cap on versus if they weren't on rotation and they went out there and picked up that car, what would they charge?
In my experience, uh, majority of them stay pretty close to that same cost. I mean, as long as there's, again, as long as there's nothing extra, you know, that they have to do, but especially for instance, you just break down on the side of the road and they come hook you up, most of the time I've seen it's between seventy-five to a hundred dollars, you know, for most of the companies.
So this is not by any means out of line on what an everyday charge would be versus a, a rotation charge?
Right, not at all.
Okay.
Well, if we're charging, well, i- if you have an outfit that's got two or more wrecks, and they sign up for the program, but they only get one spot in the rotation.
Right.
I don't think we would be charging them for that, eight wrecks.
But the ordinance requires that to operate as a wrecker period in Glen County on the roadways, you will register your wrecker and pay twenty-five dollars per wrecker to operate on the roadways.
Also, is, is it twenty-five dollars just for processing the paperwork, to get them registered?
No, I don't know why that was put on there.
It's just always.
I mean, if only.
Easy fix, the commission to say, it didn't matter if you have one or a hundred, if you wanna get on rotation, you pay one twenty-five dollar fee, you only get one wrecker, we don't care which wrecker you tow, unless it's been properly inspected.
And I feel the same way.
It's simple.
I think, I think the idea of a flat fee is probably the better way to go, if you're gonna get one shot, you pay a hundred bucks or seventy-five bucks or whatever you decide on. You get one shot, so.
Hundred bucks per wrecker company and then get, do whatever you want.
You got two wrecks or three wrecks, that's, that's fine.
So, but, uh, so are all of them inspected? Because what if the one that they register is down, and they just decide to use one that hasn't been inspected?
Well, that, yes, sir, to, for the state, if we adopt the requirement that get on our rotation, talk the rotation out, that you have to be inspected and have that, then yes, the state wants to inspect each wrecker they have. And all we do is ask them to show us proof of that inspection, or we don't allow them to use the wrecker. That's just one of the, the problems that we have with it, that Colin said earlier.
We should have, we should have requirements that each wrecker should have to meet, if they're gonna work the cause. So if they got eight wrecks and they don't have seven of them insured, that's one of the requirements, they can only use one that's insured.
Yeah, 'cause we're, we're talking liability issue, if we're saying we don't have a requirement to inspect one of your ten wrecks, only one's required to be inspected, the other nine aren't, the guy over here just got two, he has his inspected. Well, we have, our liability reduces substantially, but the guy that's got ten and only gets two of them done, he's got eight of them out there, they roll in, they haven't been inspected, and if something happens, you know, my concern is, what's our liability with that? 'Cause we're allowing them to operate without that inspection, so.
Anyway.
Well, bear in mind, just, just the last thought, this does not regulate requests.
Right.
Right, right, correct. So if you have, for example, the benefit of everyone's room.
Right.
You have two vehicles in accidents thing, one driver says, I don't have a clue, we call a rotation.
Right.
The other driver says, but I want that same company by request, then that company can come out and get two.
Sure.
Okay, just, just wanna make sure that. Yeah, I, I don't know who you use for your record, but that seventy-five dollars you're talking about, I, I need their phone number, 'cause last time I had one tow, it sure wasn't seventy-five bucks. It was like one R thirty-five too.
Alright, any other, any other comments or questions? This would be a great.
So do you want us to move forward with it as it's written here for the next upcoming agenda, and then let them work together to make the other amendments? Or do you wanna wait and do it all at once?
I think we need to wait and do it all at once, if that's the pleasure of the commission, I don't think, think we need to be dealing with this twice. Uh, let's, let's get it right the first time and get it ready for prime time and move on and be done with it.
If, if somebody on the staff will pass on to the county attorney, we'd like this done within the last, within the next few months, not next year.
Well, this would be a great project for our revenue committee if we had one. Okay.
We have a revenue committee.
Uh, who's on it?
You have this one?
Well, that's the problem.
You're looking at it.
That's right. Okay, any other comments or questions? Alright, uh, receive a SPOSS two thousand sixteen update. Uh, Mr. Austin, I think you're front and center.
Yeah, good morning, Chairman, Mr. Sir, uh, thank you for the opportunity to brief you on where we are on the, uh, SPOSS, uh, project. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you do an update on what we got. Uh, I got a few slides here before I get into the complicator, I sell matrix. Pretty small, just an overview, forty-six projects, thirty-four managed by public works, eleven managed by community development, one managed by community service. As y'all know, the, uh, the money, twenty million dollars, uh, what we collected to date, five point three million dollars, and what we committed to date, uh, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, basically, project. Breakdown of, uh, the number of projects and what they are. Seven, uh, infrastructure sidewalks, ten drainage projects, one bridge project, twelve intersection improvements, eleven of them on safe zones, one of them made them. Six dirt road paving projects, five of those are very small roads on safe zones, one is Pennix Road, which we don't have enough money to get all Pennix Road, but we're gonna pay as much as we can. And, uh, the animal control facility, and we've got some more. So what I wanted to do was, uh, give you a quick rundown, and we can go as quick or as long as you want, and go down to these things if you, if you need to. I have, uh, we have here your projects, the managers for these projects, and if I could just get your attention, I'll need to blow this up for everybody else here. I'll attempt to put this I chart up here for everybody.
Yeah, I can make that.
From this, uh, but basically across the top, we have a list of the projects, the difficulty, a target priority that we wanna try and hit that project with, that's probably a little optimistic. Uh, we have the, uh, the SPOSS estimate, scope, our procurement strategy, our challenge, current status, our next milestone date, and then I have the design point of contact in there, and the, the point of contact construction. And what the, 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 little, uh, legend of that is, uh, PW means public works, DV is David Deloche back there, he's managing, uh, twenty-five projects. CD, PA is, uh, is Paul, uh, is, uh, community developments and Paul Andrews, he's over here. And we got, uh, PW, my man DP, which is Ben Pierce, on second page. And we got, uh, I think I've got PW, but that's a connection, public, uh, service and, and John and Kyle, all the management folks, so, with assistance from us once the possibility is, uh, is a nice kind of order. So I'll start at the top, if it's okay, talking about, uh, resurfacing, we've got, uh, over eight million dollars, eight point seven million dollars. Before you, I think in a couple of days, is our project evaluation, pavement evaluation plan, uh, which we have a recommendation for a, uh, a contractor to, uh, to evaluate this four hundred and seventy miles within the county and come up with a one to end list, basically a pavement condition, uh, index of all the pavement in the county, which give us a better idea of what we should be paying, what we should be paying.
Dave.
Sir.
Pardon me.
Please interrupt me anytime, by the way.
He just did.
The, uh, might that include, that, coming up with that is, might that include, um, if, 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 if they're gonna look at all the streaks and roads in the county, is that what you said?
Yes, all, all the paved streets.
Well, well, we're about to resurface some now.
Right.
And we did some last year, and we did some year before.
Those, those would be.
Can we, can we have those listed too, and maybe a notation or something when they were resurfaced, especially those within the last ten years?
I believe we've already sent that list, or we'll share that list with the, uh, contractor, we've got a list of all our elements and what we've paved, and we'll share that data with them.
Yeah.
Uh, normally, though, you would think that those roads would be grained on a straight line, however, sometimes it depends on, uh, daily traffic and wear and stuff like that, some of them degrade faster than others. So it's important that even though the road we paved road five years ago, probably still need to have the contractor take a look at it, see if he thinks.
Sure, sure, I, I have no problem with that, I'm just saying, it, it may be worth noting if, if a road was resurfaced five years ago. Okay?
Yes.
I mean, I understand sometimes the quality of the resurfacing doesn't hold up as well, uh.
But on the finish, to make the contractor, it's more costly to go into the investigation and analysis.
Okay.
Do we have any unpaved areas where, I mean, people live?
We have, uh, most of them are on the islands that are unpaved, where people live. Uh, small, the numbers, the ones that they're building are probably less than a mile, or no, it's very less than a mile, uh, it's, they're just very short roads. There are some roads in the village, people prefer not to have paved. So we're not really touching on them.
Yeah, you also, yeah, you also have, uh, if, if, if you go at the end of, I say the end, travel that Buck Swamp Road, there's pretty good bit of Buck Swamp Road that's not paved, but it would be really throwing money away to do that, and there's also a lot of post road.
Right, and we have.
Which is pretty much just logging road.
Alright, and one other road that you and I have talked about is Paddock, which has a, a, a notation on the actual title for the, uh, that says, we're not gonna pave it, so we have to figure out how to move along with that.
We can overcome that, but yeah, that needs to be paved, so.
So, uh, so we targeted in the SPOSS, uh, three major roads. Federica, finishing up Federica from Circle K all the way down to Kingsway, Demery, and Norwich. Uh, Demery is sea island of Federica, and Norwich, and East Beach causeway, okay? Uh, so we, uh, no, we, we, this is called, you might know that at the top it say working draft, 'cause we've come up with numerous different, uh, copies of, of this, uh, and changed some stuff around. We originally were trying to pave all the island, all the, all the, uh, roads on the island at one time to just have it done instead of having you repave at paving an island, or, or paving a road on the island. Uh, however, these three islands have, uh, these three roads have traffic improvements in them, so the traffic improvements have to be worked out before we pave some of the roads. Okay, Norwich Street, we're looking at Norwich Street as an early target, and we just, we talked to Pam back there, who's incorporated, set some stuff from the city, so that we can look at incorporating some of the things that the city is doing or planning on their side of Norwich Street, so that we can do that on our side. Now, they got lots of trees, I don't know if that's gonna happen, but we do have some bike lanes and stuff like that, that we can be good with that. Moving down to old Jessup reconstruction, you have an idea what we're doing on that, a, a geotek report on that, C one hundred. We're attacking all these projects on a wide front with the intent of working all of them simultaneously to get a, a design. My job is to try and get them, uh, executed as soon as possible, and we can let Tanya worry about the money coming in. At some point in time, we may not have enough money, but if that's a problem, then we'll just hold until the money, uh, comes in. Canals, it's already blend though. Southport, hang on, the sidewalks, we have six sidewalk projects, three of them are new, three of them are, are repaired. Excuse me, four new, three repaired. Those all kinda speak for themselves. Uh, then we have a, a series of drainage projects, as you can see, that we're working on. We're going to attempt to take a stab at village drainage improvements, I know that there's a lot of those stabbed in the past, we'll try a little more time. I don't know what we're gonna present, we've booked out the, the footwork from flooding, but we're gonna try and give it another college try and see what we can do. Uh, you see some other drainage projects there? And this is what we're going, we're going, we said, uh, I'm just. And this won't be the goal, but he knows this, uh, I'm just moving down a road, uh, moving down. I mean, South Palm Ditch is the, is the bridge project that Paul has been on seventeen. After that, we get into the intersection improvement projects, of which there are, well, intersections, okay? I'll talk about the one on the mainland first, which is, which is the spur twenty-five Alpena Connection, uh, three point two million dollars, which actually, we're gonna study Cypress Mill to Strand Connector. And Ben has already got that RFP up for plenty of. So now we look at, uh.
Dave, are we looking at something, I mean, there, where Home Depot and stuff is?
Right, exactly. But we're not just, not just looking at Home Depot, Chick-fil-A, we're gonna go farther to the west, and then we're gonna cross the intersection and look in front of the Honda dealer and, uh, up towards the Strand.
Walmart.
Walmart. So, that whole area kind of needs to be looked at.
It is gonna include the Walmart, because that, that's, that's a, that's a terrible.
You gotta open the Strand Connector, right?
Yeah, I've seen a couple of accidents there just in the last couple of days, so that's, that's a bad intersection.
So the, uh, the eleven traffic, uh, situations on the island, we have bunched those into four major groups. We're looking at the Sea Palms area, also got a drainage problem, we'll throw it in on that one, does that make sense? We're looking at the Federica group, we're looking over there at the Demery, I mean, uh, East Beach Causeway at Demery, and over at Ocean, and then we're coming down and looking at, uh, Kingsway and Federica.
Dave, have we decided what improvements we're gonna do to these, these intersections in Federica?
Yes.
Did you see how?
What we have done is, we have, uh, reviewed the pond study, have been reviewed the pond study, then we had the pond folks come in to give us a presentation on their findings. Now, we didn't, uh, take, and the pond study had some other stuff, and wanted to make some more studies, but we just looked at the intersections that they had, that Dave Haley had already put on here, and we looked at that, and we had them talk about their recommendations. And so we have aligned ourselves with their recommendations. I have the pond study up here, if you wanna talk, to go on forward down into the particular intersection. But what we're looking at, all right, and what I need from you today, because we need to move forward with our RFPs out there, Pond Study has, uh, recommended, uh, three roundabouts, okay? They have recommended a roundabout at, uh, Demery, at East Beach Causeway, and they've recommended a roundabout at East Beach Causeway and Ocean. And what I need from you today is for you to give us guidance that we need to go forward on that, because I only have design funds to move forward on that particular solution. Down in Kingsway and Federica, because of the way the projects were done, we have design funds for a preliminary design for a roundabout and a intersection improvement, which is more asphalt. We'd like to go forward in that area with those two concepts, come back and show you those two concepts, say, this is what we have the engineer up here, sort of, with, and recommend which is the better solution, and has your own vote on it.
So what, what do you need today?
I need a, uh, so, I need to move forward on all RFP designs, I need you to tell me to keep going, okay? And then, uh, we need a, a, what's there, it's like, that's right here? So, uh, we need to move forward on the two roundabout concepts, uh, designs on St. Simons Island, that's the roundabout at Demery and East Beach, and at Ocean and East Beach. And we need to move forward on both concepts for additional waves of roundabouts that Federica can do forward.
You know, I thought that we purposely, conscientiously, did not designate that we would necessarily do roundabouts in St. Simons when we put the SPOSS list together, um, only because we really didn't know what the folks wanted over there. Is that right?
I was not part of the original discussion, as you might remember, but, but I've gotten involved in this at a, at a relatively persistent level, and when Pond came back about two or three months ago, Dave had a meeting with myself and Ben and several others with the Pond Group, and we talked about this. And, and, and my, my concern, you know, without trying to be, uh, too cynical, is that, you know, when, when, when all you have is a hammer, all the world looks like a nail, and, uh, they see traffic, they see traffic congestion, they wanna stick a roundabout in there. So, so, so I, I went into this with a little bit of skepticism, uh, and have talked to, to a lot of people about it. I think the simplest one to put to bed here, in my mind, is a Demery Road and East Beach Causeway. I think unfortunately, that's a mess, it's a, it's, it's a three-way intersection, uh, there are some that think it would be a great idea to, to, to carry East Beach Causeway across into the woods over towards the air, airport, be sort of a, a road, road to nowhere, but, uh, I think it's a blind intersection, it gets jammed up during the summertime, and of all the places where, where a roundabout makes sense, to me, that makes the most. Now, that being said, Dave, as we talked about, uh, so think about this, if you go out Federica Road to Lawrence, that is a one-lane roundabout, okay? If you look at Federica and Demery, that's a two-lane roundabout. You can handle, in my opinion, and I'm not a traffic engineer, as Ben well knows, but I can, I can argue like one, uh, two, two, two-lane roundabouts can handle more, more volume. See, I got even the electrician people all set up me. And, and, and my concern is some of these designs were made for one-lane roundabouts, which I think is a terrible error, and, uh, I'm gonna be the first one to lay down in the road and not let the tractors come in if they put a one-lane roundabout at Federica and Kingsway, right, Dave?
That's right.
I'm not, I just.
The Murphy Roundabout.
Exactly, that ain't happening. If it, if it's two lanes, we can discuss, but one lane with the volume of traffic comes through there during the, uh, during the summertime, and when there, when there's events down in the village, would be insane. Uh, I, I just, I just think it would just get too, too congested. Now, the problem, again, shifting focus to where I just spoke about, Kingsway and Federica, is that to get, to build the two-lane roundabout, you've got to acquire property. Well, there's an airport there, there's large oak trees, C Island has a pond there, pond there, you know, I just don't know, and maybe they designed it as a one-liner because of the space limitations. Also, being a fiscal conservative, I think that three point one to three point four million dollars to build a darn roundabout that may not even work, sort of upsets me a little bit. And what we've got there, speaking again at Kingsway and Federica, is when you're on Kingsway and you're going into the village, people coming out of the village have a red light, and when you're coming out of the village, you got a green light, people going into the village have a red light. How many intersections do we have in this county where a, a road coming this way has a red light on one side when there's green light on the other? I don't get it. Uh, but somebody did that in their wisdom, so what I'm suggesting is we should look at turning lanes there. Look at it, just, just telephysic works. And, and the, I would put turning lanes, uh, such that when you're coming on Kingsway in and out of the village and you come to that light, there would be a left-hand turn arrow, either to go towards the airport or towards the lodge for a certain number of seconds, and then the light would turn green, like all of our lights do, and then you'd have two-way traffic on Kingsway. And then the people waiting on Federica don't wait twice as long as you'd normally wait, and it doesn't back up there. It would require another right-hand turn lane going into the village to allow people to go into the lodge, it would have, uh, require a right-hand turning lane to go north on Federica coming out of the village. Not a big deal, certainly is not gonna be one point four million dollars. Uh, so that's the one I really have some heartburn over. Uh, I think, uh, as I said before, uh, the one, the one at Demery and East Beach, uh, makes a lot of sense to me, the one at Ocean and East Beach makes some sense to me. I think it would look a lot better, and, and there probably a one-lane, uh, roundabout-type design would, would look fabulous and, and work well. So that's my, uh, that's my sermon.
Where did you get, where did you get the three point two million dollars for the two-lane roundabout?
He, he looked at, he looked at the spur Alpena Connector.
All right, if I said three point two, I misspoke. What I, what I'm suggesting is, is that any roundabout that has been proposed so far at Kingsway and Federica.
Is a one-lane.
Thus far is one-lane, and it's one point three to one point four million dollars.
I got you.
My suggestion is, we could maybe change the timing of the traffic lights and put two right-hand turning lanes in, and I could keep the change, and we could move on, huh?
But you have agreed for the contract to look at a roundabout.
Absolutely.
He has to close the door.
No, no, and I, and I think we should, but I think if it's a one-lane roundabout with a volume, and look, at, at, at six o'clock in the morning, and, and full disclosure, I live right there, okay? So I'm not fighting my own battle, but there's a lot of traffic that comes in.
It's a mess, I go there, it's a mess.
But, but the fact of the matter, I think that at six o'clock in the morning, a one-lane roundabout would look, would work beautifully. I think at summertime, at two o'clock in the afternoon, or at four o'clock in the afternoon, there's a concert down the village, it ain't gonna work so well, one-lane roundabout. So if you're gonna put a roundabout in there, it needs to be a full-bodied, robust roundabout, if you have the land, which I'm not sure you have the land.
It needs to be a lot bigger than the one we have in Federica, because that one's way too small to achieve what.
Yeah, so anyway, anyway, those are just my, my, you know, my thoughts.
Back to what Mike was saying there.
How about the other one?
The way this wording came out, that, that is why we put intersection improvements on there and not specified roundabouts.
Right, but, but really, here, we're just talking, they're just, right.
We're certainly gonna leave it up to the experts on.
Right.
And I mean, you've, you've touched on a lot of that right there.
Right.
Uh, but, but that's the whole reason, 'cause we, we were, that's what we were pushing this SPOSS with, is not put specific roundabouts on there.
Just to be clear, I mean, I'm okay with them over there, if you and.
Yeah.
The people in St. Simons.
Right.
I mean, I'm okay with that, but, but at the time that we, the point in time of the process where we had to put something on paper, we decided, well, we don't know if they, do we not, we can find out later. We put the money in, Peter's here, he can find out what they wanna do over there, and I guess the question is, do you really know what, whether it's a one-lane or a two-lane?
Yeah, I think, like so many other things, Mike, I mean, you're always gonna have people passionately on either end of the, uh, story, and, uh, you know, thus far, I've, I've, I've heard, you know, not a lot, because we haven't publicly, uh, discussed it, probably to the extent that we need to, because we're, we're just approaching the time to obtain the, the funds to do that. And, as, you know, Bob said, you know, the euphemism of intersection improvement was used, and, so I don't wanna all of a sudden say we're gonna spring these roundabouts, but we, we do need to start having that conversation, but I think we're moving along, Dave, do we, uh, so, so to reiterate, what do we have to decide today?
Well, I need to know, I'm, we're putting, Ben's just putting the RFP out, and I don't have money to design both concepts on those two roundabouts, so, I, we either need to go back and talk about them again, or he need to give me, the board need to give me guidance to go ahead and move out on those two roundabouts.
Yeah.
Or on either side of East Beach Causeway.
Right, and, and, and I, I understand what you're saying, and, and I think, to, to me, it, it seems as if that, that, that those are, are two areas where they, they make both sense and, and, and meet the least resistance from the conversations I've had. Uh, I, I just think the one at Demery and, and East Beach Causeway is, is really a, a problem, a safety problem and a line-of-sight problem, and, uh, you know, we, we should move forward with that, and, um, so I see, I see no, no problem with, with, uh.
Those two?
Those two, I, but I, I, I would like to see what, what the thoughts are by, for a more robust roundabout cost at Federica and Kingsway versus intersection improvements.
Well, we, we've obviously budgeted for a one-lane roundabout or intersection improvement there at Kingsway and Federica, so, what do you want?
I think, I think we should, uh...